Okay, I think we're ready to move along with the legislative update. Dr. Thomas, you want to make the introductions?
Yeah, thank you Chair White and Ford. Tonight, as we discuss our legislative agenda, we thought it would be appropriate to bring in some of our elected officials. We have Representative Hanson with us tonight. Senator Port may be joining us. She was a little tentative. Senator Pratt and Representative Bakeburg all have been very instrumental in advocating for what is best in public education. So I want to thank all of you for your tireless work. I jokingly, but I'm really serious, say, I don't know how you do it. And I know many of you say the same about us. But it speaks to the fact that we don't do it alone, that collectively, we do this work together to really advance what's best for us every single day. So I just want to thank you all for coming out tonight. And just asking you all to kind of just speak to the upcoming session and some of the things that are before us. And as we get ready to dive into our legislative platform, which again, as I've shared with the board in other contexts, is a carbon copy of almost of MSBA, AMSD. It's a dominant platform that really speaks to, I think, many of the issues that have already started to begin conversations. So, you know, so again, thank you all for coming. And I'm left-handed, so I'll go to my left. And everybody knows that about me, so they usually sit to my right. So Representative Hanson, if you want to start, but just some high-level conversations about what's happening.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I represent Jess Hanson. I represent 55A, which is the entire city of Savage and then the northwest part of Burnsville. So I have two school districts, this one and the 191 district. Obviously quite different districts too, so trying to juggle what your different priorities are always, it's always fun to do that. This year in the legislature, obviously you're seeing a lot in the press about what's going on. We are negotiating to make sure that we can get to a co-governing structure. The Minnesota voters sent a tide house, and so we want to make sure we honor that. Obviously, I have more information for you as those negotiations continue as well. But for me, the biggest piece that's been important to me in my, my time in the legislature is making sure that we're really fighting for equitable education, whether that's on making sure we're funding everything appropriately, we're not leaving you high and dry, relying on your property tax base so much, also making sure that we're closing those cross subsidies, whether it's for the ELL or for the special education one, which we have quite a bit of ways to continue to go there. We know that children with disabilities need continued ongoing services that we can continue to improve on as well. And making sure kids feel safest at school has always been important to me. As a kid, I grew up very, very poor in poverty. School was one of the only places I ate. And so it's really important that we preserve the, you know, affordable lunches, free lunches, wherever we can as much as possible as well. And then making sure that we have enough support staff there. So we passed the bills to make sure we have a social worker in every building and also making sure that we have nurses in every school as well. So I know that wasn't so much of an issue here, but statewide, I think it was really important to push that forward. And then making sure that our educators are supported remains a high priority too. Making sure that those negotiations between you two can go as they need to go without us intervening too much in those, but also making sure that we're advocating for our teachers. We know that this is a tireless career and it's hard, it's hard out there. So I'll kind of wrap it up there, or I can talk all night about it.
Thank you Representative Hanson. Senator Pratt?
Thank you. Thank you, members of the board and administration. It's a pleasure to be here. Eric Pratt, I represent Senate District 54, which is most of Scott County, so the communities of Shakopee, Prior Lake, and Jordan, as well as four townships. And before I get started, let me just, I got a text from Senator Port. She got stuck at a meeting in St. Paul and sends her regrets. But we'll be, we'll be in touch. I don't need my, my comments to be partisan, but you know, certainly I have a point of view that, that I'm going to address and feel free to, you know, this is just, these are my thoughts. As a former member of this board, I, you know, certainly appreciate the experience that I had and the perspective that it gives me when I'm, you know, doing the work in St. Paul. So we spent an $18 billion surplus, a record surplus. And after doing that and increasing taxes to $10 billion, we are now faced with a $5.1 billion deficit in the coming years. Now, let me just explain, I'm the co-chair slash ranking member of the Finance Committee, and I spent 30 years in banking and financial services. So if I geek out on the numbers on you, I'm sorry. That's just who I am. So with, you know, facing a $5.1 billion deficit after this biennium and into the next, money is going to be tight. And we just know that. I was disappointed to see the governor's budget came out and really removed supports for non-public school students, as well as for our disabled community. What does that mean? That means it's going to be pushing more of that responsibility, more of that financial responsibility onto the school districts and onto the county, which will then lead to property tax increases for all our residents. We spend, in this current biennium, which ends on July 1st, we will spend almost $29 billion on education. That's roughly about 34%, 35% of our budget. And in the last, just in this budget cycle, from, it went up $4.7 billion. The issue isn't that we spent the money, the issue is how we spent the money. We spent the money on new mandates that are costing you your funds to implement. They're taking money out of the classroom, taking money away from kids to meet the mandates that, that we in the legislature provide and essentially usurped your authority to do the job that you were elected to do. And so as we're looking forward, you know, to the budget negotiations or discussions, I'm certainly looking through the budgets right now, trying to find opportunities to save money. We added almost 1,000 new state employees over the last two years, looking at where those positions aren't filled and seeing if we can call some of those back would be a huge cost savings. But I've been where, where you are. I mean, it's, it's hard to believe we spent $4.1 billion more in education and not just Prior Lake, Savage, but districts across the state are finding themselves having to cut budgets. And we, we as, as the legislators need to do better on that. We need to respect the authority. I often say that, you know, Prior Lake is not the same as Pelican Lake or Pequot, you know, or any of the others. Our kids have different needs and the one-size-fits-all solutions that we, that we passed over the last two years just don't, don't fit. I often say one-size, one-size-fits-all rarely fits anybody. So, and then, you know, after Representative Bakeburg will be having to take any questions.
On that positive note.
I like you being the good guy.
So, and I think, you know, I'm going to focus my comments on, on what we, you know, what we can focus on to improve schools for kids. There's a lot going on in the House. And we could, we could spend all night and we could have a, just walk out the same way we came in, but, but I just want to, I want to focus my comments on just the priorities that, that I have. And, and really it's grounded in my experience as a, as a practitioner. I'm currently a middle school principal as well. I was at school this morning and I'll be there tomorrow morning. But I, before I jump into it, I want to just say thank you. I, I've said it before and I truly believe it, that I think your job as school board members is the most difficult job for an elected official because you make a hard decision and you're going to have some hard decisions to make at this board table. And then you go to buy ones in Byerly's and you're shopping and getting groceries and you're going to have, hey, do you have a second? Hey, do you have a second? And about three hours later, your, your meal is cold and your spouse is like, where were you? Well, someone just needed a second and it was a few hours later. So, so thank you for the work you do. And it's personal as well. Many of you are parents, so the decisions that you make could, you know, positively or negatively impact your own children. And, and I think that really, you know, many have asked me, you know, why do you do this? And Dr. Thomas, you talked a little about this. And it's, it's really about my perspective and my lens. So I'm the only current middle school principal serving in any level of state government. There's, there's a couple of other educators in different roles, but I'm the only one from an administrator lens. And sometimes people automatically assume that, well, he's just another administrator. But I was a teacher, I was a coach, we're all educators. So I worked as a paraprofessional in college on my winter break. I worked as a custodian, so I've seen multiple perspectives within schools. So that's really the lens that I bring. So I'm going into my, or starting my second term, I'm the vice chair of education finance. So, so, you know, honored to be a part of that. I'm on our exec team in the GOP caucus, so part of our leadership team at school, we call it our faculty council. And then I'm also on the Labor and Workforce Committee and wanted to ask to be on that committee, really with a desire to look at, how do we, how do we make the school experience, how do we marry that and work with the needs of our workforce and the needs of the business community? You know, to, to be able to prepare our kids for, and in our district, we talk a lot about the three Es, whether it's education, whether it's enlistment, or whether it's employment. But preparing the kids and giving the kids the tools so that they can be successful, whichever path they choose to go. So that's, those are the committees. And I think my, my passion is to support kids first and foremost, like that. And I think that's every single person, whether you're a teacher in the back or whether you're a board member at the table, are, you do this because you want to support kids. And, you know, I think that we, we have to recognize that the decisions that we make legislatively tie your hands and force you to make decisions that you maybe do or do not want to make. So, you know, Senator Pratt talked about the governor's proposal. There's a, and he highlighted some of the concerns within it. I share those concerns. Probably my bigger concern within the governor's proposal is that there's an increase for the Department of Education and there's a decrease of, of money going to schools. And, and I, I just met with the department and, and I, I talked about the concerns, Senator Pratt did, and I just said, how in the world can you justify increasing your budget at the department when districts across the state are cutting? And the response was, oh, it's just inflationary and, you know, just, just adjusting budgets to inflation. And I just said, how about you cut your budget? Because if you don't do it here at the department, schools across the district are going to be cut. So, so I have significant concerns. And to the teachers in the back, I would just ask you to think about, like, how, how can the department increase their budget and decrease money going to schools? Because that's what the governor's proposal did. So decisions have consequences. Kind of coming into session, my priorities that, that I've been working on and, you know, Ms. Herman and Dr. Thomas testified, did an amazing job of representing. And, and I'll be honest, not everything, it certainly wasn't a partisan conversation. It was, you know, you both said some things that some of my Republican colleagues were like, ah, but it's your experience. And that's what we need to hear that, so that we can make the best policies available. So you both did an amazing job. Thank you for doing that in, in both the House and the Senate. But what I heard in testimony was a significant concern about paid family medical leave, Earn Sick and Save Time, the unemployment for hourly workers. Now, like, this is where things can get off the rails because people will start to say, well, if you're not for this, then you're against this. And it's just not the reality. Senator Pratt was the author of another option for paid family medical leave. So that was, that was something we could have, we could have talked about. Earn Sick and Save Time. You know, there are, obviously, we want to take care of people that, that want to be with their families when, you know, during different times. But the reality and what I heard overwhelmingly is that whether it be school districts, whether it be counties, cities, townships, already have negotiated contracts. And the thing that was the most concerning to me was, one of the things that was concerning was, there was a, a comment that someone made just about, you know, about having to get subs for subs, that was an issue. But the biggest thing was, and I believe it was the superintendent from Becker, you guys correct me if I'm wrong, but said, we now, we now have to increase our administrative costs to address these mandates, and we don't want to do that. We don't want to increase administration, but we have no choice, so that's pulling money from the classroom. So, so one, my number one priority is to address some of those issues that you guys are facing. Paid family medical leave doesn't start until '26, so we have, we have some time with that. I just introduced this bill. Now with everything changed, you know, I'll have, we'll have to figure out what it means, but it's, it's a disciplined repeal mandate. And, and pulling back the, the ban on K3 suspension, pulling back the recess detention, you had, we had elementary principals there testifying. And, and Mr. Glenn did a great job talking about, it is a tool in the toolbox. And, and I think about the years that I was an elementary principal, it was, it was rare that we suspended a kid and it was a last resort. And it was after multiple interventions that we did. And it was a tool oftentimes to get parents to the table, to be able to have a conversation of, how do we support your kid? Your kid is dysregulated, there's some issues happening, what's going on at home, really to facilitate conversation. And, and this one is, you know, just as a principle, this is a, this is one that, that I'm passionate about, that we need to fix because this is just a bad law. The, the thing that, from the, the testimony, I think it was Anoka Henepin said that their classrooms have been cleared out about 300 times. Let that sink in. So the community members, you know, 300 times, kids that are in a math class at an elementary or learning to read because of a student's disruptive behavior have been, the, the kids that were doing what they're supposed to be doing were asked to go somewhere else. That's not the intent of, of that law. Like, we can come together and come up with some common sense solutions to support schools and most importantly, support kids. And, you know, there, there's a lot of things that passed and Superintendent Law from the Minnetoka District talked about, we need to get back to funding our priorities. So one of our, another bill is, is talking about raising standards and reducing mandates. And it really focuses, the bill focuses on innovation and allowing local school districts to innovate for what, what best fits their needs because Prior Lake is different than Pequot Lakes. So when we have this one-size-fits-all, it doesn't, it doesn't allow you to get creative. We just, you know, the MSBA just had their superintendent's conference and, and we joke as principals in Jordan, maybe I shouldn't say this, but we joke, okay, what are the board members going to come back with? What new flashy idea did they get at the MSBA conference? And then they're going to want to have us do. And so we had our board retreat this weekend and, you know, we, we talked about some of those ideas. Yeah. So it's local control, innovation, and then literacy are those pieces. But yeah, so that's kind of where I'm at. Dr. Thomas told me to wrap it up, so I think. We're waiting for some discussion.
So what, this point, any questions for?
Yeah, I have a question. The last bill that you mentioned, raising standards, innovation, what's, do you know the, what the bill name is or who authored it or what number?
So Peggy Bennett, it's, it was House File 6. It'll get re-introduced.
It's the one about the Rita, it starts out, it's talking about the Rita, HF6.
Yeah, there's three articles, three components to it.
But it's within that bill.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Anybody else have questions?
I don't have a question, but I just have a comment. I want to thank you all for what you do. I really appreciate Senator Pratt, the experience you have on the board. Ben, your, your experience and your current, you know, serving as a principal while doing this. And also for you Jessica, just, I really appreciate what you're doing. I think that the comment that sticks to me the most is what you said then regarding in the increase in the Department of Ed. I did, I did, you know, skim through that budget, the governor's budget, and it's, it overwhelms me to skim through it. But I appreciate what you said with the increase in the Department of Ed and with the less, less monies going to schools. It kind of wraps the everything, it wraps it up for me. This challenge that we're, we're facing and, so, yeah, I just want to say, I just really want to say thank you. I appreciate how approachable you are. I appreciate the experience that you bring in representing us and.
Let me just say thank you. And if you're going to call them Ben and Jessica, call me here.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I started really formal and then I'm like, yeah, that doesn't work.
Mary, you got a question?
Yeah, I just, one of the questions that I've had and I, and I don't need a dissertation as a response, but there's always a fight between the federal government funding ideas and the state. And I know that that was a big issue in the last couple of years. If it's not our fault, it's not our problem, the federal government has to. But you know, all across the nation, but particularly in Minnesota, the cross subsidy to help sped students has just strangled us for almost 20, 30 years. And it's getting worse, even though the funding increased and barely covered the increase in the number of paras that we needed, as well as the renegotiation of those contracts for those services. Is that something that can bind everyone together? Because I know there's, I listened to the news today about what's been going on. And I mean, but that alone, I would hope that everyone would at least be on the same page of trying to find a way to fund that, since we are seeing increased numbers.
I think yes. That's going to just be my bold answer. As a person who needed extra help at school that didn't get that, like, I just know firsthand what it's like to kind of grow up and try to learn that as an adult. So helping our kids early, that early intervention is really, really important. And so I've been a big supporter of making sure we can do that. It ought to be a bipartisan issue because, you know, again, kids deserve an equitable education regardless of what their ability or disability is.
I, you know, I, it was, it was something when I was on the board that I, I rebelled against. You know, when, when idea was passed back in the seventies, the federal government said they were going to cover 40% of the cost. I think that the highest they've gotten is either 11 or 14. I can't remember the exact number.
With inflation, it's actually much less. Yeah.
So it's, it's always been a struggle. I would say that there's always going to be some cross subsidy that, you know, part of it is we need you guys to have skin in the game to look for those efficiencies that, that we can try to find. You know, I was, I was meeting with Director Boyen the other day, talking about, you know, kind of how we manage special education cost when we had a deficit that had, that really gripped this district for, you know, almost 10 years. And we were able to move out of that because special ed was one of those things that was always, we, you know, we would plan to make a cut or we would plan to, to do something in order to balance the budget, and then we always came in over budget because of maintenance effort. I think it's something we have to be a partnership with. Back in 2018, when I was chairing the Education Policy Committee, we had a series of hearings. We came out with six bills, identified several areas where state law exceeds what the federal requirements are. And in some cases, I think we got three of those passed. The biggest one was decoupling the functional behavior analysis from the IEP to help save teachers' time and let them spend more kid time with their students. And I think there's still some more that we can do. I'm not always saying that we, we should always follow the federal, the federal, the federal guidelines to a T, that there's something that we want to do for Minnesota kids. We should do it. But I think there has to be some evaluation that this is a low value or a high value mandate that we're putting on it. And then making sure that we pay for that mandate if we do, if we do in fact require it.
Yeah, I think there's bipartisan support addressing the cross subsidy. So I'd agree with both of them. I think Eric brings up a good point about, like, we have to have skin in the game as well. So, you know, moving to 100%, the, the money is going to come somewhere. And one of my roles as a principal is, is to be a district rep in IEP meetings. So, and I go back all the way, when I was up in St. Michael, and one of the special ed trainers would, would always challenge us, you know, and what's appropriate? And what, what does appropriate mean in faith? And my definition of appropriate is very different, or could be different, than a parent's definition and a teacher's definition. So being, being that, that district rep in that conversation to talk about, okay, yes, that might be best, and oftentimes it's paras, having a one-on-one para, that might be a great way to do it. But, you know, I'll, I think we have to think about, how does AI play into some of this stuff? And are there some areas that we can support? You know, I've been at different conferences and they talk about that, like, how, how with some of these emerging technologies? And there's all kinds of issues, I get it. But how does that look for, for some of our students? Could we, could we provide that support in a different way? And then the other thing I'd say about just bipartisan work as well, Heather Keeler, she's a rep from the Moorhead area, and she and I have been working on, we, we did an attendance and truancy task force, came up with some recommendations and have some bipartisan bills to really support educators, support teachers, support parents, to be able to understand some information. I can talk about that more another time.
Questions? First, thank you all for being here, appreciate it. My question really goes to all of the unfunded mandates from, you know, that came down. What is your plan to either get us money and/or take them back? That's not a hard question, at all. You know?
I will just say that I have repeatedly asked for a list of what, because every district finds something different. 191 is telling me something different than what you guys are telling me. So I would like to see that list of what you're finding to be an unfunded mandate, and then I think we can have a more like transparent conversation about what that looks like. If we're talking about students being allowed to have their, you know, native students being allowed to use their regalia at college, at graduation on their way to college, I think that's a little bit different than, you know, Earn Sick and Save Time or the Paid Family Medical Leave mandates, right? And so having a conversation specifically about what those mandates are, some of it is protecting kids' rights to be who they are in schools. And those are things that a lot of us are really wanting to hold firm on, because making sure that, again, kids feel safest at school is a priority. So I would ask anybody and everybody to send a list of what you find those unfunded mandates so that I, with two districts, can compare and contrast and then bring that back to more conversations.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, there's, you know, there, there's a multitude of mandates. The biggest cost drivers that I've heard from schools consistently, not schools and counties, is, is Earn Sick and Save Time, Paid Family Medical. The UI was funded upfront, but what is going to happen in the future? So it's just to be very clear to people in the public, like, right now it's funded, but in the future, it, you know, if you're forced to levy for that, that's, that comes with a cost. It's a decision. So, you know, so those are just a, a couple of them. And then there's, it, it's not necessarily just the, the cost, the, the dollar cents cost of a mandate, but it's the person cost as well. And that's really, like, I think about all of the discipline mandates. The, the person cost, like, that is really all that, that we did as, as principals, is, okay, how do we, how do we adjust all of these things? And, and actually Representative Hanson was the author of a, of a, of language added in around sadistic, what is it? Sadistic and, and I just like, number one, I thought it was sad. I mean, it totally, great, fine, like, that's one of the mandates, but there's not a financial cost to that malicious and sadistic conduct.
Yeah, it's the beyond bullying policy, which makes sure that schools have a policy around what is considered malicious and sadistic bullying, which is when bullying happens.
happens for a student being who they are, whether it's the color of their skin, who they worship, how much money their parents make, whatever it might be, or their disability. And it's my understanding AMSD has created a model policy trying to offset that from having to be created at each individual district level as well.
So what was telling to me is, so every year we do a, we do a Words Matter presentation to our kids, where, where we go in and we talk about, you know, all of our, our discipline stuff, our PBIS kind of matrix we walk through. We talk about, you know, if, we talk about teasing, bullying, harassment, and then we add it in malicious and sadistic conduct. And I had a kid say, well, that definition is really sad. And I'm like, I agree, but we need to talk about it because it's happened somewhere. So, so that, there was no financial cost to that, but there was, you know, conversations and, and not a bad mandate. Like, not all of the bad mandates are bad, but there's, there's a, there's a financial cost, but then there's also a human cost. And that human cost is, for me, the hardest to quantify on a spreadsheet.
And I, you know, I like what Representative Hanson said is, is, you know, I'd like to know which of the mandates are really causing you the greatest heartburn. You know, when I talk to the guys in northern Minnesota, there are certain mandates that are hitting them harder than they're hitting the metro schools. And so, you know, as your representative, I want to make sure I'm advocating for that. You know, Ben touched on Paid Family Medical Leave and the E S S T, which was always negotiated in the contracts, which we've now superseded. And again, taking away your authority. And quite honestly, the ability for you to work with your staff, make sure that you have the right benefit package, as you're meeting the needs of the people that work for you and that you serve, you know? When I was an officer at Target and US Bank, it was always about, you know, how could I help my employees be more efficient, more effective, right? And, and every time we step in and do some of these, I think we remove a little bit of that, of that person contact. That's a person cost, as I would see it. So, and, you know, I don't know how much of this you, you know, you were already paying in, and how much is the new cash flow drain on the district. So I, I agree with Representative Hanson. Let's see what the, you know, I'd, I'd like to know what's, what's impacting you the most.
I will, if I may, Chair White. First of all, thank you all for, for coming out and just giving us a little teaser of what's to come in the upcoming session, and appreciate the opportunity for us to be able to come down, and, and we'll continue to have those conversations as we go through session. Just big picture, and we'll unpack it a little bit more later tonight, but with some of the mandates, are the ones that we could actually quantify? And Representative Big Bird, I, I appreciate you bringing up this real dollar cost and the hidden cost of time. And time's a hard thing to quantify. But I will just generally say, we are between $2 and $2.5 million in unfunded or underfunded mandates in our district. And we'll walk, we can set time to walk through that more granular with, with you all. We'll do some of that with the board tonight. And that's just the things that we're able to kind of get our hands on, right? And, and understand enough about it to say, okay, this is what the cost. And then there's some hidden costs, like E S S T for us, we have a number, but because of the language of E S S T, we don't know, would that have historically been sick time normally, or would that have been something else? For, I mean, we, we are going to split hairs on truly the cost of E S S T. But if we just said it's new for us, it'd be upwards of $308,000, right? If we just said it was all new E S S T and historically not sick leave, right? Like, that's the magnitude of the challenges that we're facing. And in a district that historically has been managing some issues financially, you know, almost $4 million this year, $4 million next year, and for the next five years, we can foresee another $20 million cumulative. You heard our colleague talk in another district about $18 million cumulative over the next five years, like, and then we have our community said, but you've got all this cash, right? And, and that's kind of the narrative that's out there that we have to kind of work against and feeling like we're swimming uphill. So part of it is, I think it is this joint effort of telling the whole story of kind of what happens, because we all have skin in the game. And at the end of the day, our communities are paying the price, right? So we have to be mindful of that and stewards of that. So, you know, we will continue to be a partner with you throughout the session to give you real context for what does this look like on the ground, so that you can take that perspective, you know, to your, to your sessions. But just wanted to give that before you left, just a ballpark. We are between $2 and $2.5 million in just a tip of the iceberg of the mandates that we are able to take a look at.
And Dr. Thomas, could you, and when you get that information to us, tell us, not now, but when you get a chance, what would it look like if we were to drastically cut public education funding across the board? I think Senator Pratt and I disagree on this. I do think that we should increase our funding. We have different tax generators we can have.
Why not? I didn't say we were going to cut funding.
Well, and I think saying like, finding how we're spending the money is important, and I agree with you on that. But I think that we are running a risk of potentially some folks thinking that that is the best solution in order to shrink some government spending. And, and I support what Senator Pratt says, more so than what I've heard from others around me, is that reallocating how we spend that money as opposed to just not. But if there were a cut to public education funding, I would be interested in learning more about how that would specifically affect this district, if you could include that in any communications with me.
Sure. Thank you.
Can I just, one comment, just to be very clear, like, I have no interest in cutting education funding. Now, reprioritizing, absolutely. But zero interest in, in cutting. I actually just drafted a 3-3 bill and dropped that bill, and Senator Pratt, Senator Duckworth now the Senate companion. So, so getting behind funding education, 100%. Now, there, I think anyone who understands public school finance understands there's some issues with the formula, so. So, just a little. So, like, and, and let's get together and let's actually, let's, let's solve that problem.
Yeah.
So that you're not having $20 million in five years, and, and let's address that. So there's also another bill on the local option revenue, which is more dollar for dollar. So, so 100% supportive of how do we, how do we increase and support our school districts and increase funding? But we're going to have to reprioritize, is just the reality.
Thank you.
Can I add one comment? I would just also like to call out and just the impact to our employees as well. Well, we hear a lot at the negotiations tables, the increase in inflation and making adjustments to our contracts to try to help with that. And I just want to call out with, especially with the Paid Family Medical Leave, with our benefits in place already with paid time off and with long-term disability, that the increase of about $312,000 and up to $425,000, depending on where the rates fall, that's also going to be equating, impacting all of our employees. So they're going to be seeing less take-home money with that as well. So I just want to make sure that the impact, the financial impact to the employees as well with these mandates is taken into consideration, because I think that might be a hard hit, especially for some of our employee groups.
Well, and I don't have it specifically for schools, but I, you know, I, when we were passing that, I asked specifically, what was the impact to public employers? So, school districts, cities, counties. The, the proposed tax was about $1.5 billion. It's going to be closer to $2 billion a year. I don't know what the updated number is, but I can tell you it was, it was probably about $210 million was going to be coming from public employers. And so then all that will be hitting onto property tax payers as well as, as your budgets. Now, cities and counties get to increase their levy, you have to go ask for it. And that's always been a challenge as well.
Before you leave, thank you for being here, truly, and I will be in touch with you all as well, because I would like to sit down. I just want to name that there are so many students, so many teachers, so many staff who are terrified right now to come to school, to leave their homes. They're worried about mom, dad, grandma and grandpa not being there when they get back from school. And what I'm, what I'm thinking of is the trickle-down effect to our state of a lot of this. And I'm, and I'm not just talking about immigration, I'm talking about, you alluded to it earlier, about people not feeling welcome to be themselves. And so I just want to name that, that that is something that is a very big priority for me, for our district, to make sure to abide by our equity resolution that we have in our district, to make everyone feel welcome and safe here. And I worry about the trickle-down. So I know that there are so many other things, all of these conversations notwithstanding. They are so important, and we're going to be talking about them tonight. And you said too, our job is hard. So is yours. But equally hard are the students in the classrooms and the teachers who teach them and who are on the front lines every day. And so I just want to make sure I name that, that there are a lot of terrified people right now, and that's going to be a major focus for me personally.
I would just like to add, Representative Big Bird, Senator Pratt, Representative Hanson, I think at the end of the day, we as a board sit here, we, we live in nonpartisan roles different than you do. We're here, we're, we're all here to educate kids, and it's all about student outcomes. So if you guys could just keep that on the top of the mind as you're up at the Capitol and you're working on partisan issues, things like non-exclusionary discipline, disruptions in the classroom, it impacts student outcomes. And we have done no favors to our students in this state based solely on proficiency scores. And we're, we're failing our kids, and we need to figure out how to work together and how to get back to educating our students. So thank you for being here. We'll be in touch. If you ever need anybody to testify at the Capitol, please feel free to reach out. I'm happy to do so.
Thank you all for having us. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, moving on to the 2025 legislative platform discussion.
Thank you, Chair White and board. What you see here is a draft that kind of a lot of what we talked about just a few minutes ago. Now, I'll just kind of walk you through some of the context around this, but you've probably seen this too, within your advocacy role with MSBA. So a broad category of enhancing student-centered learning, you know, going, going back to the notion that Director Atkinson was talking about, like, we're here for the kids. And there are a lot of things that have come through the equation that don't fall into the purview of, of that necessarily. And so that's another thing that we would like to make sure that we're, we're focused on. And there's a lot of things that you'll see that may or may not be here, but then like MSBA or MAS was taking, so like Patrick was down talking about some of this. So we've kind of bifurcated a variety of these things to respective advocacy sessions. But here, one of the things that we're, going back to the model of education, we are really driven by this old model of seat time versus experiential learning of kids and being able to apply that for credit. And so learning for kids doesn't necessarily have to be just between eight and three sitting in a 30 by 30 classroom. There are alternate ways that students can actually demonstrate competencies, mastery of competencies, academic competencies as well. And so that's another area that we feel that to not just be wedded to hours of instruction, that we actually have some flexibility in where those students can actually get some of that instruction to have it take place. Replacing the MCAs at the high school with a nationally recognized college entrance exam, like the ACTs. We continually see across the board that students, here's a very real example. Kids who take the MCA in their junior year aren't going to get those results back until August of their senior year. There's nothing that's going to change for that student, okay? Colleges don't look at the MCA, that student has already committed, they're, they're, they're on that I'm in my last year mode. So of all timings of the test, that's the worst timing aspect, right? So, but what we do see is kids care heavily, particularly if they're going off into the military, going off to college, the ASVAB, ACTs, et cetera. So looking at ways that we can target some of that versus just purely the MCA as the sole distinction of that. And I would say that the collective argument around our current state assessment system, is it working? Is it appropriate? Is it aligned to the standards, even within the same department? Are the standards written by MDE matched to the assessments of MDE? And we are seeing many holes in that. You've heard a lot of conversations, the, or when we've done some conversations with that, from some of our teachers who have spoken to the gaps. And so finding ways that we can get a work group to really review and potentially overhaul the state assessment system so that aligns that we can progress monitor the outcomes for our kids in a better way. During Safe Schools, essentially going through a variety of things, our Safe Schools levy as well as LTFM to allow for greater flexibility with LTFM to maximize our resources and supports for security modifications, that's currently not allowable, as well as tailored instructional spaces to accommodate additions or remodeling to address the safety issues that might come up in schools. So that's kind of the general sense of what's happening around the Safe Schools. Restoring managerial rights and enhancing local control. If I were to prioritize, this is a big thing. I mean, we just, we just heard in our short 15, 20 minutes, when you don't have control at the local level and things are being decided at 30,000-foot level, and there's no connection to what's happening at the ground, this is where we find roads. And we would like to find ways that we can maximize that. So a couple of things here that are listed is, this past session, our operating levy gives boards the authority to one-time renew your current operating. The collective advocacy is around if you have a capital project levy to be able to do the same. We don't have a capital levy, but being part of that advocacy group, this is a big conversation point for many. Should we ever have a capital levy? Gives this board the autonomy to be able to extend that one time, if that's something this board would like to do. And for example, just put in the context, with our current operating levy, if we don't ever go out for a different levy, and this one expires in two years or a year and a half or whatever, if I get my math right, versus going back now for what the taxpayers have already agreed to, you would have the one-time authority as a board to just renew that. Same would apply with a capital levy, should that.
The capital levy like a tech levy, or is different than a tech levy?
Capital, capital, well, it, it could be.
Okay.
It could be classified, tech can be classified as capital.
Okay, that's what's curious.
Most times, tech levies will ride on their own, but it's very similar.
Okay.
And also calendaring. So right now, we have to, you have to meet a series of requirements if a local school district wanted to adjust their start date before Labor Day. And the threshold has historically been really tied to capital improvement projects, and that's really the only time that you would get approval, to the tune of $400,000 and above. And those districts who have had that have never gone back. And giving flexibility, again, at the local level to set your start and end times. So if you recall, when we're having calendar conversations here and we were going through that levy campaign, if there were some things, well, there was some things, particularly around the safety remake of the high school entry, would have easily qualified us with some other LTFM to be able to adjust our calendar start date, and that accommodates for construction, et cetera. But the other component we saw is that in the '26, '27 school year, did I get that year right?
Yep.
Labor Day, I think, is like almost the middle of September. And so to start then, we're going to be going to school almost at the end of June. And so to be able to, if our community said, well, that doesn't make sense based on what we typically do as families in this community, we would like to start before Labor Day, if we didn't meet the criteria that the state has set, even though our community would want it, we couldn't do it. And so giving some latitude at the local level to manage your own calendar versus having the Department of Education manage individual school calendars. We've already had the bullet around the publishing our proceedings on the district website in lieu of newspaper, because we're seeing more and more Suns and Prior Lake Americans and all those kind of, you know, smaller papers. you know, smaller papers not continue moving forward. And essentially, the ask is allow that to be permanent because, as we discussed earlier, the wave of those small print papers, we're not going to see that demand likely come back to that. So we're going to have to evolve to new ways of publishing. So that's something that we would like to continue versus just the one-year reprieve that we have. And then also, given the flexibility for boards to eliminate the requirement of a three-day notice for remote school board meeting access, something happens, one of you gets sick, and you still want to participate, and you want to go remote, allow for various things, well, we would have to notice that three days in advance for us to be able to do that. And we don't necessarily forecast when we're going to have situations occur in life. And so giving boards the flexibility to be able to still maintain and hold their board meetings should at the eleventh hour need to pivot or individuals needing to pivot. Funding priorities, you heard Representative Baker talk a little bit about local optional revenue. This also has been something not tied to inflation. And so the advocacy is to bring that back up to nine seventy-four, where it should be if we had inflation. You know, in a district like ours, where we don't have a strong commercial base, it's statistically harder to pass levies because everything goes on the residential tax base. And so when you have, you know, a community like Edina that has Southdale or Bloomington that has Mall of America, it's fairly easy to pass levies in those spaces because the commercial really manages that for you. I mean, so LOR would be balanced out with aid so that we wouldn't have to go to our community and ask for as much because we would get some of that reprieve in aid from the state in districts that are composed very similar to us. And anything else I missed on that one? Okay. And then looking at the funding formula, this is also a historical component that has not been tied to inflation. Just this past session, they began to tie it to inflation with a cap of three percent. And we know that inflation is kind of in a weird space right now. That may or may not bode well in the long term. But if we're capped at three and inflation goes kind of where it has been, we're going to be underwater again. And when I was testifying last week with the team of folks, one of the things that we talked about, and for just our district, had this been tied to inflation, and this is an outdated number now, but we would have netted about eleven million dollars in our budget. So we would have never had to have gone to our community just this past year if inflation at the state level would have been something on the base funding formula. And then I'll close with a quick side editorial on the funding formula. It's outdated. So again, looking at our, and you heard a couple of them talk about this, our base funding formula is predicated on a continual supply of families having babies coming into schools. And in an aging state, the rhetorical question is, is it an antiquated formula when that premise is no longer our reality? So that is going to be likely a push for a task force. And this is something that the mayors and I were advocating for when we had our regional mayor's meeting two summers ago, is really planting the seeds for the state to really review that. Because every school is vying for enrollment right now. In the state, many schools, I should say, are vying for enrollment, particularly in the metro area. And this isn't like, these are bad schools, bad districts, things, you know, are going awry. We are just not seeing the K-12 birth rates. And so we've got to find a way to address that at the state level of how they may have to adjust that formula. Down below, you'll see, again, I know you all have seen a lot of this in your groups, but we're mindful that there's not a well of money at the state level, but we're just putting the reality of what we think it would take to begin to make us whole, given some of the other factors that you heard a couple of our representatives talk about earlier tonight. So three percent on that funding formula would at least get some more traction of adding fuel to the underfunded issues that we've just discussed, as well as the general funding formula that's upside down due to inflation. Talked a little bit about LOR already. A big one is provide ongoing funding to cover state mandated costs of Minnesota unemployment. That money is projected to run out in twenty-six. So, and that was a big discussion point. And I know Emily spoke to some of this last week, too, down at the Capitol. But that's a big one. We'll talk about some of the bigger ones in just a few minutes. Provide additional funding for the REED Act, woefully underfunded for us. That is equating to nearly a million dollars, given the dynamics of how many staff we have to train, curriculum, as well as what we get in state aid to provide the mandatory training. We're lucky, I'll just say it like that, that we have an agreement with our staff, as well as a board that has a calendar, what time built in to be able to do this PD during the contact day. If we couldn't have that, we would be about a million dollars underwater, okay? So again, it's a very real underfunded issue. And again, it's, it's just, we're lucky. Some of our colleagues are not. The cross subsidies, we could spend an entire evening on cross subsidies. And I'll just say with EL and special education, it's a significant investment that they made, very appreciative in the last session, that we're in that forty to forty-five percent funding range. But we're still having to cross subsidize quite significantly with what we are continuing to see more and more students coming and becoming identified and getting special ed services. So the population of support isn't going down, it's only increasing. And then increasing equalization of various funding formulas and allowing for greater flexibility once that whole package hits the omnibus bill. So what you see before you here, team, is essentially a lot of parallel language between MSBA and AMSD. It reflects a lot of the conversation that you heard from some of our representatives. And what you don't see here, you're also, I would say, you're MESA, our elementary and secondary principals associations are also carrying some pretty heavy direct practice advocacy as well to the Capitol. And then lastly, which is not on any platform, so to speak, is what is to come federally. And anything that changes federally, we know eventually is going to find its way to the states. A lot of unknowns for that. We're watching, kind of monitoring, you know, any of those tea leaves to tell us what potential impacts that might have on K-12 education, but more to come on that. So, Chair White, I turn it back for feedback.
Discussion, questions?
And I know I've said this every year, that we go into the Capitol, but the more we ask for, kind of the less we get, and we only get little pieces of it. You know, we need the task force, the formula was, I think the formula that we're running on was written in nineteen seventy-nine originally, if I'm not mistaken.
Seventy-one.
Seventy-one, okay. I knew it was in the seventies. So it's written like the tax code. It's awful. It's needed overhaul. It's not going to happen this year, but if we get a task force to look at it, as long as the task force has representatives from, you know, school finance departments is the key. So they have a realistic, because the last thing I want is a whole bunch of legislators sitting down and trying to write this. So I think that's a key, but, and that's something that's an ongoing thing. I don't think it's going to change immediate. But what you have in the last pink here, and the very last thing, is kind of the summary of what we need immediately, and is probably the most important because it also includes local control. And again, when we go up to the Capitol and we're speaking with people, and we have a list of all these different bullets, again, we don't get any of them fully. So could we potentially, with AMSD, MSBA, say, we're going to put all of our eggs in these three baskets and really, really fight for those three or four things? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just want to capture it here for the discussion.
No, I get it.
Absolutely, makes perfect sense.
And I love the way this is, but we always come with these lists of things. And they're really hard to articulate, and a lot of them are codependent. So I just would ask that if we, as part, and we fight for this with MSBA, and we fight for this AMSD, go with our top three, that we can put all of our, you know, all of our power behind, and we're probably going to get them instead of splitting them out.
That's a question because it relates, it kind of goes off of Director Francis' comment. When I, when I read this, which I think, I really like this. I think this is very well done. My first thought was page two should be page one. Because to Director Francis' point, like, this is kind of like the bulk of it, right? And I wondered if we could, if it could become page one and page two, because these are, you know, our talking points, essentially when we're meeting with these lawmakers. And so that's, that's like point number one. And then in this, in the yellow, in the yellow box, it's yellow, right? Yellow box on page two, you know, a formula that hasn't been updated since nineteen seventy-one. I want to put that in here. Parentheses, whatever it takes. Skywriting, put it in gold. That's just asinine to me. And then, you know, Dr. Thomas, you said the REED Act funding, that's nearly a million dollars for us, and we're one of the lucky ones. And I think I would like to put that dollar amount in here.
Well, and I want to be clear, too, would be a million for us. And if our calendar changes, or, you know, we don't have success in getting it in, then we're going to be on the hook for cost to cross subsidize the mandatory training.
Correct.
And then there's those ancillary costs that I won't get into right now tonight about curriculum.
And just, that's, that's a pretty, a million dollars is a pretty big number.
And you quantify that now, or no? Put it in there as you have?
Yeah, I mean, I--
Yeah, we certainly, I think, I mean, this is a conversation that we've had. So we can say, if we didn't have the ability to have it during our contact time, for our district, it would, it would cost us one million dollars to meet the letter of the law.
But we do have that ability. So what does it actually cost us right now? Is there a cost?
Current, currently, do you, do you, the current, the current cost?
The current cost for the training, well, we have an allocation that we haven't fully utilized yet. But when, when the training is all done, and we don't know the training that we need for phase two, cohort two, we would know better. And that's not going to be established until October of next year. So--
To add to that, that's for professional development only.
Yeah, that's--
We also have an anticipated cost of curriculum around two hundred to five hundred thousand. It removes our ability to reimburse for existing curriculum that we would have been able to do the cost round. And then this is one of those, to Representative Baker's question, this is one of those underfunded mandates that came with a lot of human capital attached to it, whether that's the curriculum specialist or Dr. Edwards' team, the principals, really having to wrap their heads around all of this and change practices and support our staff around it. Those are the, those are all the items that it's very difficult to quantify right now, how much that's going to cost us in the long run.
And to that end, putting a dollar amount could sell ourselves short in giving that cost estimate impact.
Can I just ask a question? I'm not trying to usurp Director Olstead's time, but how much of that is the new curriculum? Because everything that I've studied about this thing is we're really just changing methods of teaching, and we're applying tools to what we already have. I'm worried that we're having to rip out our foundation's curriculum as well and replace that, and that's a hard cost.
Correct. And that's yet to be determined if, in fact, that is the direction that our committee will go to do so. And then there would be cost. What we do know currently is that we would not get reimbursed for that investment that has already been made.
Wouldn't be out of compliance with statute if we didn't replace and add the curriculum that's being recommended?
But there will be additional, addition, additions that we do need in order to be compliant with the curriculum.
And that's a hard cost.
Yep, and that's the hard cost. So again, we haven't gone into the investigation of those options at this point, but we will be doing so beginning this spring and into next summer and into the following school year to be up and running the year after.
I just had one more thing, and then I can, then I'm done. Under restore managerial rights, the last two bullets, they are incredibly important. I would advocate, I don't think they need to be on this, on the platform. And I think it would make this section stronger if we had the top two bullets. I'd be curious what other people thought. Again, important. I just, I don't know if they belong on the platform.
Where are you referring to?
The, under restore managerial rights, the last two bullets.
Okay. Because a lot of the stuff on the managerial rights, it's not, well, first of all, the official proceedings and all that kind of stuff, that's just memorializing something they did temporarily last year, and that's not a cost issue. But the other things in the, and this is what we can actually focus on with schools, there's a lot of stuff on here in that payment, I believe, that affects small, small businesses all the way to large businesses, and disproportionately so. And I think we can depend on some of those.
Yeah, I don't want to touch the top, too.
But this is all local control, okay?
Yeah, it's just the bottom two.
Keep the first two bullets, strike the last two, is what you're saying, Director Olstead?
Important, but I don't know if they, with everything else on this platform, I think, there are stronger advocacy points.
I'm, I'm happy to keep replacing the high school MCAs, increase your school safety levy, get rid of everything else on the first page, and then keep everything in the yellow on the second page. Other than that, I like the format of the first page. Everything else, right, keep it short, keep it sweet, keep it one page, and that's it.
We had one page last year, and then everything blew up this year with every advocacy group to multiple pages. And so we tried to capture it, just to have you all see, because last year, we went down to a one-pager in four or five bucks.
Understand. And, and all the advocacy groups are right, they're going to advocate for everything that they want. We should advocate for what we want. And that's where I think, you know, these things here, and then those two bullets, just myself personally, I think those things really hit. I completely agree with you on the last two. I think everything else on here--
Would you be amendable to front and back?
That's what this is, technically, but no.
Sure, you know, I really like the layout here, right? And if we can go just two bullets, like one-liners that we can hit, and then everyone should be able to speak to this if somebody's asking a question about it, right? But just really big things, you know, easy to read, let's, let's go, let's, and let's--
I do like the working group, though.
And then that first box, Director Johnson, the first, the second bullet?
Yes. The replace the high school MCA.
My only concern about that is, is for the MCAs, they are not really meant to be an individual student assessment. It is because of the leg time. It's really, MCAs really assess, is the school district--
Curriculum assessment.
It's a sum, it's a sum--
Yeah, it's a curriculum assessment. And so how do we know if our school district, you know, I think you're probably on that. So I, I'm actually not surprised by that.
I view it as someone who moved into this district, you know, six years ago. And when I'm looking at it, I, I look at it as someone coming in from the outside, you know, what are the ACT scores at the high school? Because, because it matters. And I had no idea what an MCA was when I was looking at it. But I knew what an ACT was because it's a national standard.
We do both.
Yeah. So that's where I think, and I think to Dr. Thomas's point would be, maybe a lot of the eleventh graders don't decide to do the MCAs. Maybe they decide to opt out of it because who cares? There's no point in it. That would just be my, my two cents on it. If we want to keep it--
I think it's, and I think Director Mason, you were kind of talking about evaluating school effectiveness and things.
Yeah.
And I think that's the third bullet, is to ensure that we have a system that's accurately doing that. Because right now, there are gaps in MDE.
Yes.
And significant. So I would, I, what I'm-- MDA and significant. So I would, I, what I'm hearing is, at the high school level specifically, looking at a national assessment is likely going to be where our kids are going to put their, their priorities and our families. And then comprehensively, basically K, you know, or other grade levels, how do we then have a functional assessment protocol for the state that actually is aligned and makes sense? Because again, this hasn't been, I mean, I can probably, everything from profiles of learning to where we're at today, nobody, nobody gets this thing right, right? So it needs to be reviewed. Keeping something there for accountability, but what's, what we have right now has so many holes in it, nobody puts weight into it. So, I mean, many people are questioning the validity of it, put it that way.
Well, and speaking of outdated, right? I mean, these tests are outdated and haven't been updated for a long time. I, I like the working group. I was very excited to see this bullet point personally.
I think we just have to make sure that-
I think there needs to be some change.
Sorry, apologize.
Sorry, I interrupted you again.
No, you're fine. I think we just have to make sure that as long as, if we move to it, that everybody takes something, so that we are ensuring that we are getting and collecting data appropriately. Nobody likes standardized tests, but we have to make sure that we're correct. So whether that be an ACT, an MCA, as then, whatever it might be, somebody needs to take something.
There's even talk of fast bridge going into the high school.
Yeah.
Yeah, as long as we have some money.
Something's going to be there. All right. So can I just, I'm sorry.
Well, the walking- We're, we're getting close to the edge of getting slightly off topic. I'm, I'm understanding what you're saying, but we're talking about organizing a platform. And what Mary said was almost mirrors what I was thinking. I think we need to zero in on a few things that lend themselves toward local control. If I've said this once, I said it a million times, we have a school district chock full of PhDs and master's degrees. Give us control and we'll figure it out. And I mean, that's a plain way to say it, but I guarantee you it's true. And so I like this working group as well, but the rest of the platform, I think should zero in on a couple of things. Like Mary said, if we, if we zero on a two or three, we might get them. If we zero in on 11, we'll get three and they won't be any good. And so however that, that shakes out, the things on the list that lend themselves to us pulling back some of the control mandates, I think have awoken a lot of people up to that. I think that's our best bet because when I heard of the, on Wednesday, the testimony was the same song from every school district, big, small, rural, tiny, huge, didn't matter. That's pretty rare that all districts are experiencing the same issue regarding this kind of, this kind of deal.
Was telling this, the, the structural deficiency.
So that, that's all I'm looking for. Let's, let's, I think we zero in.
So can I quickly just zero in and then send this back out for review?
Yeah, can I add something that I'd like to add? There's, I feel like, I agree with you, less is more. You know, this platform should represent the unique, unique needs of our community and it should align to our strat plan. I feel like that one thing that's really missing is Representative Baker is up at the House advocating for a change in the non-disclusionary discipline. Principal Glenn went up and testified, thank you so much. That has had been a huge impact on our district. It's not listed anywhere on our platform. So that would be a way that we could-
Save schools and staff. I mean, put it there.
Yeah, right, right, right. And so-
Plan myself a local angle.
Right, right. And then mandated curriculum, I mean, that, that, those mandates. And then obviously the funding formula. But I, I do agree that keeping it very simple, even like three bullet points, then we can just focus in on when we're up in the Capitol talking. Because looking back at our legislative platforms, the whole funding formula and how we as a district have a harder time passing the levy than somebody in Bloomington, you know, me and I talked about that. That is a very vocal issue that, you know, I think hits hard, hard because our taxpayers, our homeowners absorb the taxes much more than somebody who lives in a district who has a lot of commercial property. So to me, it's really like three things. It's the discipline, it's the mandates, and then it's somehow the for, funding formula is really what I would like to summarize up to me.
I do have one thing though that I want to add is for the testing, if we really want to do something, let's say it is the ACT, then we should do it at ninth and 11th grade. Because right now, we have the same issue with kids not showing up for the MCA's as with the ACT. They, they come and they take it as a practice test. They're not preparing, they're not trying. And then the ones that can afford it go and take it themselves. So if you really want it as a gauge, you, you need to have a way to test prior to the 11th grade mark so that they have a goal, we have feedback, et cetera. Doing it once and we're just replacing the ACT and then also has to fund it. But I'm going to go back to what Dan said and that let's just get some three or four heavy hitters and put everything behind it and have that focus on local control.
So if the heading is local, increase local control as the heading, I'm hearing four things and there might be a parenthetical component to the last. Going, address, writing about the funding formula, and then within that, we can talk about LOR, et cetera. Like we could parenthetical that. K-12 assessment review, task force, that would include things of the ACT as well as all the other aspects of assessments that we need to look at. Okay? So kind of lump it together. K-3 discipline and repeal slash revise previous session mandates. And then we can list like our top four. And that's going to be REED Act, ESST, unemployment, and paid family leave.
Could you write a dollar amount by those? Like this is what it cost us? As an easy, like go-to reference or as long as we have a, some sort of-
Yep. We, we could do that. I, I don't know, yeah, we, let us take a stab at that on if it should be on here or if that should just be your companion note. Chee-chee.
I have a few of that. So I'm very much in line with that. I agree, like let's shorten it, keep it short and sweet. I really would love to see it be very specific and setting at what we think are achievable goals. I don't think that's super clear in here, but you know, a few things. I actually kind of disagree with the, the two bullets on, on the bottom there because I think those are things that we can probably accomplish and they're very specific goals.
Which, which ones?
The two life elimination, the three day notice for remote, you know, that's-
Oh, okay.
That's something achievable that we can have in as a goal and, and it's very clear. I don't love that first bullet there. I would advocate to remove that. It's, it's probably not a priority for us. First of all, we don't have a capital project levy, but also I don't, I think that should stay with the voters personally. And then the last thing I had is that first, I'm sorry, the last bullet under enhanced student-centered learning, the last sentence that says that better supports student-centered learning. I don't love the wording on that. I wish that we had it say something more like, that system that better supports student-centered learning. Yeah. We maybe state like that measures academic outcomes. Like I think we're really missing, missing academic outcomes and excellence in that statement.
Better reflects.
Better measures or better measures academic outcomes or better?
And everybody's method of getting there is going to be different.
Gotcha. Okay. So we can words, so, so I, I hear that feedback and I think-
Yeah, I agree with the, like, let's stick to a few things, make sure they're achievable goals and, and really make that clearer.
And if I just may add, I know that we separated last year down to one pager. The language was still really broad. So we allowed the legislature and, and all the different deliberations to kind of fill in the blanks and it didn't help us. I know we didn't ask for those unfunded mandates and the, and the mandates that were not fully funded, but at the same time, I agree with Director Mason that if we're going to pick a few things, let's be very specific.
Right. And I think if we, if we, if we have this last section, still the heading, restore managerial rights and enhance local control, the things that are important to all of you fall under that. Would that be a general agreement? Okay. So, so again, going through addressing issues of the funding formula and then, you know, just listening to Director Mason just a second ago, we focus more on the funding formula and LOR and the inflationary indices and not go into the renewals and all that kind of stuff. So just those three examples, okay, of funding formula, of funding. K-12 assessment review, and I'm hearing to make sure that what we talk about, that best supports academic learning for, for kids, kind of focusing that language there to capture that. Because that's what we're trying to measure through those assessments. Got that. K-3 discipline, we've got the repeal language that we can surface through our testimony already. And that's going to be something that's going to mainly hit obviously our K-3. And then the last is repealing revising mandates. And then the mandates that we're talking about with specifics would be those four big ones that I just mentioned that were basically what we just talked about with these folks just, you know, a few minutes ago. And then I will, one pager that. And then what I think I'll do is, so we would, our plan was to bring this to you all at the February business meeting, but I can have two by ones or one by one connections with you all just to see, did I capture this conversation? And then we'll bring this to the board for discussion. And if there's any last tweaks that you all want to make there, you can say, okay, yeah, we'll approve it with these two things that just need to get quickly revised. Okay. All right.
I have one thing to add is in meeting with some of the representatives, one of the things that they mentioned over and over again is the story that we tell, right? Having the story. So I couldn't agree more with having just a few bullet points to speak about. But what is that, if you could help us with that story of Prior Lake Savagery Schools, something that sticks, that they will bring forward, you know, it's like, we have, we have in the, the three or four bullet points, yes. But what is that story that, that will stick with them? It's one thing that was mentioned multiple times. It's having that story. And, you know, we all could try to make up our own, but I think it-
We can give you some anecdotes that you can refer to.
I think that is helpful. It's helpful for me at least.
All right. We're good? We're after that? All right.
Thank you for that discussion. Moving on to staffing and employee group's designation. Director Coleman.
Thank you, Chair White, members of the board. So just to go over quickly, oh, that's me. Oh, turn it on. I didn't read the note. I have all. Okay, turn it on. All right, while that's going, just to quickly go over the objectives today. So just doing a quick refresher on the budget reductions to date, overview of various roles and positions of the district. Kind of a summary that we've already talked about a lot tonight is just the personnel required for statutory required and essential programs. Discuss different staffing models, impacts, provide an overview on staffing models and then just highlight some additional resources that we can also go into Tammy's presentation too, because ours kind of piggyback off of each other. There you go. Okay. So just a refresher for some of the newer board members and for the community. Reductions have been made to date. Since the 1920 school year, we have approximately reduced our budget by $5 million of, or used our savings account to present a balanced budget. Last year alone, we made $4 million in cuts, which is about a 3.3% reduction. With the district office departments taking about a 1.2 million reduction, which was 4.7% of the department budgets. Administrators reductions was a little over half a million, which was 5.6% of administrative costs. And then the enrollment based adjustments to the, to the reductions was 1.8 million or 1.8%. And when we, we speak to the enrollment based adjustments, that's where we made adjustments to the number of teachers we had in, in specific schools because we didn't have the enrollment to justify the, the additional sections. So it didn't change any staffing models for this current year. Talking about that story that Vice Chair Bulling just spoke to, just want to give a story behind what some of these cuts have looked like to date from Dr. Edwards' department.
Yes. So we think that the context of the historic reductions that we have made in the area of academic services is a story that we wanted to make sure we have as a common ground. And the end of this story is that the number of bodies that we have available to support the work in the area of academic services and ultimately academic achievement is significantly less than it was in the year 2021. At the end of the year 2021, a initial reduction was made in which the assistant superintendent position was eliminated. The following year, we failed our technology referendum in the fall of 22, or 21, rather. And we were forced to make some other financial decisions. At that time, we eliminated three FTE that were a part of our support team that were out across the buildings. We had actually four, but we only realized three of the reductions because we moved one of those positions into a peer coach model with a focus on our tech support and integration. But we did in fact lose three people who were full-time, both two that were supported at the secondary level and two that were supporting at the elementary level. And they were pushed into the sites to do that work. We then maintained a status quo in the 23-24 school year. But then last year, as we prepared and as was shown in the previous slide, we identified needs to do additional reductions to realize our reduction. And we since reduced our differentiation specialists that were supporting at the site levels across the district by two FTE. And we also reduced a curriculum specialist position in which we had both a secondary and a elementary curriculum specialist previously. And now we are down to one FTE curriculum specialist that supports K-12 curriculum. These are from CTOs, just as a reminder, that terminology is teacher on special assignments. So these are licensed teachers who, in most cases, and in all cases currently, the remaining are teachers that have been serving a teacher role with us previously. We also are, you'll see in our reduction list that we bring forward later this evening in this conversation, there's additional proposed reduction in the area of TOSA specifically in the peer coach. And we'll, we'll speak to that in a moment. But the point of emphasis here is that the personnel that are not in the classroom, but yet supporting classroom teachers at our sites, those positions no longer exist, with the exception of a curriculum specialist and a differentiation specialist that serve, in the case of the curriculum specialist, K-12, and in the case of differentiation specialist, K-12.
You don't have words? Just wanted to give the, the board a, a quick list of all the different positions that are throughout our, our school that help achieve our mission. So it really takes multiple different positions, whether that's operation of the buildings, cleaning buildings, supporting our students, and non-certified positions or certified positions. I won't read this whole list to you all, but there's just multiple different positions through our district. And it's very important when we're looking at different reports, whether that be external or internal, that we have a, a common understanding of what those definitions are, so that we use the same parameters when talking and comparing different reports. Because each report, especially externally, has different definitions and they change quite frequently. So I know some of the board members that have been present already, this is a repeat for you and I apologize, but just for new board members, an example that we've spoken to at a couple of different board meetings was like the STAR report is utilized in some reports that have showed up in our audit to show the different staffing throughout the years. But the STAR report definitions change every single year. So which, which position on our list falls in our administrative assistant position or director position, that changes every single year with the STAR report. So when looking at a STAR- So when looking at a STAR report, for example, you can see that like it doesn't, in 2022, it says that we have 11 administrative assistants. Well, that's not accurate. We have more than 11 administrative assistants. Or it shows that we only had, we had zero directors from the year 2013 through the year 2019. That's not accurate. We had directors at that time. It's just the definitions under the STAR report change. So then when it rolls up into these reports that are utilized for different purposes, it appears that we have these different changes over time. But we, we didn't. It's just the STAR report that's used for a very specific purpose for MDE is then utilized to create these other reports that don't have a standard definition over the years. So we just have to be very cautious when we're looking at different reports externally and internally that we are comparing apples to apples and we have a common understanding of what positions fall under those different categories. I won't belabor this point because I think we've talked about this quite a bit, but what we find quite frequently, especially over the last two years, I said this in my testimony at the Capitol as well. From my, from my experience working in public schools the last few years has been very unique in the amount of new mandates that we've seen and the number of impacts that it's had. Not only on direct financial impacts, but indirect human capital impacts of how much time is taken and dedicating to our staff to, to fulfill those mandates. It's extremely hard to quantify. So I don't know, Martha, did you get a chance to hand out those printouts?
No.
Okay, but one example that might be helpful for, for you all and especially for the newer board members is there's some resources on MSBA for you under legislative impacts. That just, this is just one example that I have found helpful, so I wanted to provide a copy to you all. That it's just by category of impact and then it lists all the different legislative impacts of schools for tracking with the different times that they're implemented. So as you can see, this alone is over 240 some lines, I believe. Six pages long and that's from one year legislation of new mandates that got passed down. So as we're tracking and making sure that we're responding to compliance, it's taking away our abilities to have our staffing directed to other programs. So we really now are at the stage where all of our staffing models are either essential programs or statutorily required programs. Because we have to meet all these statutory requirements. The list on the slide is definitely not anywhere near exhaustive, it's just, it's just examples. Each one of our departments and each one of our schools and classroom teachers can probably spend at least two weeks explaining all the statutory requirements that they have to meet. And again, that's just the 2023, that, or they have the 2024 summary on there as well as just a resource if, if you all want to look through all the different changes that have happened. MSBA has some really great resources on that. Next slide is just, again, this is not an exhaustive list, but just to provide some examples. As we talked about at our last board meeting, from some of the, the board questions, every single staffing model is going to have impacts to our students. So while we have tried our best to keep our cuts away from, from impacting our students in a, a system of ours and how directly everyone's position helps reach our mission, we're going to see key impacts no matter what we do. These are again, not exhaustive lists, but just some key examples. So when you're looking at increasing the class size, that's reduction in individual supports. If you're looking at reduction in administrative assistance, that disruption to operations and supports for our teachers and our staff in the buildings. All of this really is just to show that regardless of what we do, there are going to be key impacts that come to play. And we have to balance that with what we statutorily have to move forward with. And that becomes more and more burdensome every year as we get more and more statutes that are passed down to us. And then this is just some examples of some of the reports that we have available. I also attached an FTE per, by building list. I just want to denote that with the transition from Skyward SMS to Skyward Q, there, there's a lot of data cleanup and we are working through some of that. So I do know there are some positions that are located under different buildings that really should be under other ones. And we are doing our due diligence to fix all of that. But I wanted to get you guys a, a report of the building FTE. So that's attached in the board packet, but these are some hyperlinks to some additional resources. For, not only for staffing reports and, and financial information, but also the link to see all the different statutes that impact school districts, employment, all, all of that, those other topics. The Chair, oh, sorry. Key takeaways, that since the 1920 school year, we've been in budget reduction mode. Future reductions are going to affect essential program, essential function, sorry, requiring thoughtful prioritization of limited resources. Mandated programs, including over 70 new state mandates, and just in the last two years, continue to grow in scope and increasing costs and straining resources. And it's limiting our funding for professional development and teacher support challenges efforts to increase growth. So just the fewer staff, heavier workloads, and reduce capacity sustain and increase academic outcomes for students and operational efficiencies. Chair White, I don't know if you want Tammy to go into her presentation, because they kind of attach to each other.
I was just going to say, we're about to dive into the one that's going to probably take some time. Do we need four minutes here or just dive in? Up to you guys. Good, go. Okay.